Good evening, sorry for the delay. I'd like to call the Cumberland School Committee meeting to order at 7:50 and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee?
So we'll mention.
Motion by Mr. Demodica, seconded by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries five zero. And I'd like to note for the record that Mr. Dunning and Mr. Fiorello are absent this evening. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Approval of minutes, regular meeting 12:10, special meeting 12:16, executive session 12:10, executive session 12:16. Enrollment report from January 1. School police report from December 1, 2015. Residency-truancy report from January 1. Pleasure of the committee on the consent agenda.
So movement.
Motion by Mr. Salvatore.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Teal and Mr. Demodica. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries five zero. Next item is report out of executive session meeting. Student hearing decision on a three to two vote. The school committee upheld the superintendent's recommendation. There were no other votes taken, and I need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session.
So.
Motion by Mr. Duffy, second by Mr. Demodica. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report recognitions. Mr. Mitchell.
Madam Chair, would you please join me down at the podium?
With pleasure.
... five photos to the judges for their review. There were, this is a national recognition, and there were hundreds of applications from across the country, along with a portfolio. Recipients were chosen based on several criteria, including an essay that they had written, letters of reference, and their school transfer. I learned about Oliver's award in one of Mr. Tenrero's weekly listserv announcements that he sends out to everyone. And he also included, I think, one of the pictures that Oliver submitted, which was a picture of two women from the Galapagos or Ecuador. From Ecuador, he was one of the students who went on an Ecuador trip. So it's really, really quite impressive. So Oliver, on behalf of the district and the school committee, we want to congratulate you on winning this really impressive award and feel really proud of your work. Thank you. (applause). You want to say anything?
Well, it's up to you, sure, if you want to do it. You don't have to. Okay. Thank you.
(laughter). Thank you. (pause). Madam Chair, there was one other thing that I wanted to share with you that the district will be getting involved in again this year. There is an organization called the Picture of Children's Health Organization, and every year for the last three years, and this will be the fourth year, this organization is encouraging all students and adults in the state of Rhode Island to eat healthy. So they're going to be having this year again the Fourth Annual 2016 Eat Healthy Rhode Island. And they are, they have a little motto, and it is Wear Green, Eat Green. And they're encouraging all of the districts in the state of Rhode Island to participate. We have determined that we will participate. All eight of our schools will be participating. The date of this particular event is on Wednesday, March 9, 2016. The Eat Healthy Rhode Island is now in its fourth years. It has grown to be the largest per capita celebration of children's health this nation has ever seen. So we look forward to continuing our good work on health and wellness. As you all know, that we have really worked hard over the last couple of years to really focus our attention in the district on health and wellness. In fact, Mr. Salvatore and I were talking about a meeting that we have scheduled for either next week or the week after. So we have a number of people who are really making a significant contribution to this committee and to this particular cause. So we look forward to this event on March 9, Wednesday, March 9, 2016. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So Oliver, can I ask you a few questions? They're going to be yes or no's. So, do you want to be a photojournalist? Yes. Excellent. And maybe it's more than a yes or no. Can you just give us the topics for your submission? I know that some were from the Galapagos, but what were some others?
So basically, there's some streetlights from the area, just like native things that were going on in the community. One is there, I think, there's a local day breakfast, and it's not sweet, and there was a little bit of tree. Also, one of the, one was Hulken, that was one of Doc's, one of the black ones.
And are you a junior or a senior?
I'm a senior.
Madam Chair, may I add one more thing?
Of course.
In my conversation with Oliver, I also learned, and I should have mentioned this, that in addition to the scholarship and the wonderful recognition, and only five students from across the country were honored, he also received a digital camera, which is not nearly as nice as the one that he used to take the pictures.
Yeah.[582.54][582.54](laugh). I'm friendly with Andrew Dickerman, who is or was a photographer with the Providence Journal. And Mr. Dickerman is traveling all around Southeast Asia right now and is photo-journaling his way in youth hostels and aboard funky transportation sources, and talking about the diversity of how clean Singapore is versus the chaos in other communities. So it's, for me, a really interesting perspective to see what he's exposing me to that I never would have had the opportunity to see. So congratulations on your work. That's a nice achievement. Anyone else? Mr. Demodica.
Oliver, if you would like to drive up to Norwood, Massachusetts, I'll give you some opportunities from my newspapers to take some pictures and publish them. So I'll get your phone number and information, and we'll get you published as well. All right.
I can't help you with any of that, but good job, Mr. Demodica. Mr. McLaughlin, Representative, thank you.
(inaudible). Oliver, we really want to hear your feedback. (inaudible). A lot of journalists.
Thank you, Representative. I think you can talk with Principal Tenrero, and he'll help you connect all the dots, but you should come to more of our school committee meetings, because (laughter) a lot of good things for Oliver. All righty. Next item on the agenda is Chairperson's report, school-town collaboration. Mr. Duffy, I don't know if you want to give us a few highlights.
Yeah, we met Tuesday, and at that time Superintendent Mitchell gave his vision for the real needs going forward and some of the deficiencies that we have in comparison to some of the districts, that we need to fill some holes. We discussed that. We have, I believe, three more meetings. We're going to meet next Tuesday, where we're going to cover the finances. We're coming back between the town and the school department to kind of put both the numbers together to see what happens over seven years with the budget that we feel that we need to continue our current services at this current level and with the assumptions on the town side. Then after that, we should have probably two more meetings, one more of a more brainstorming meeting to cover potential revenues, potential sharing of services or combining of services, whether it be with the town or other districts or other schools as well. So we're going to look at cost savings and cost generating at that meeting, just ideas, but not really dig into them. And then one final meeting to really put everything together for our recommendations that we will then pass off to the school committee as well as the town and have like a report that we'll put together. Thank you.
Nice work. Mr. Mitchell, with regard to that, could you ensure that you share with the school committee, because I know some of the members are on the task force and some aren't, the handout that you had provided? And I don't know if you want to provide, at this point, just a real high level, what were some of the major bullet points that you had shared with the task force? And I don't want to put you on the spot. If you're not ready, we can do it.
No, no, that's okay. I mean, we, you know, I've spent a lot of time on this, so I'll just give you a very quick overview. First of all, yes, I will certainly get that, we're calling it Priority of Needs document to the school committee. So there were, I think, several key areas that we need to focus our attention on. One that we have discussed on several occasions is the high school start time. So we had a conversation about the rationale for really strongly considering a later start time at the high school. We discussed the advantages of a later start time. It really is unhealthy for students to be starting school at 7:15. We discussed the benefits of starting school at least an hour later. Our ideal start time would be 8:30 for both middle and high school. And some of the benefits are, and this is, these are statistically significant improvements that happen with a later start time, and that is improved academic performance, better attendance, fewer tardies, fewer, believe it or not, behavior issues. And there's also been some research that supports that teenagers, because they're getting more sleep over the course of the day, there are fewer automobile accidents. So we discussed, that was number one. We also discussed the need for social workers and psychologists. We only have two social workers in the district. Just to give you a little comparison, I was the principal of Charahoe High School for 12 years. Charahoe's not a wealthy district. I had two social workers in the high school alone. So we have, and I use the example of the elementary schools, we have one social worker providing services for 2,000 students. And one, as you all know, as members of the committee, when, in our Achievement Subcommittee meetings, we have heard from every single principal the need for more mental health support. So in addition to the social workers, closely aligned to that are our school psychologists. We're requesting two additional school psychologists. They provide a wide range of services, most importantly, educational assessment, where they are actively involved in making decisions about where students are in their learning and whether or not they are, play a key role in determining whether or not a student is eligible for special education services. But it's not just that. They provide all kinds, mental health counseling, they do group work, as do social workers, by the way. Another key area of concern is, and we all know that, we've discussed this many times, I think there is a real burden on parents, especially in the district, because athletics are underfunded. So one of the things that we hope to do is increase funding for athletics. And as you know, Madam Chair, and I know that other members of the committee are aware of this, RIDE has a unified chart of accounts, which provides very specific, provides a very specific breakdown of how every district's dollars are spent. There is a, an actual breakdown on the amount per pupil that is spent on athletics and extracurricular activities. And Cumberland's, for example, we spend $77 per student. And just to give you a comparison, and we are fifth from the bottom in the state in that particular area of funding. Lincoln, I believe, is at least double, so there, I think they're like 151 per student. And Smithfield is less than that. I think they're like 120 something, as I recall. But as you can, that is per student. We have 4,500 students in the district. So just a $20 per difference increase per student generates $90,000 more for the athletic program. So that was another, one of the main areas. Oh, just very, and this will be the last thing that I'll mention, there were two other really important areas. One was an RTI coordinator. 20% of our students in the district are receiving intervention services. So students who are assessed and not where they should be in their learning, receive intervention services. So when you consider that 20% of 4,500, 900 students are currently receiving intervention services in the district, and I think we're doing a fine job, or as best we can, to coordinate that tremendous responsibility in all of the interventionists and reading specialists that we have, and teachers who are supporting the improvement in academic performance of those 900 students. But we, and we've been, this is one of those things we've been talking about for years. We need a person, a point person, to take on that tremendous responsibility of coordinating RTI services in the district. That's one of those things that's always on the list and always gets cut. So, and the only other, the only other thing that I would mention, and this is, this is a requirement by regulation, because we have an increased number of ELL students, by regulation, once the number of students exceeds, that is English language learners, once the number of English language learners exceeds 150 students, then we are required to have a, an ELL administrator. So that would be a person who is certified both as an ELL educator, but also is a certified administrator. So we are required by regulation to have that individual monitoring and facilitating ELL services in the district. So those are the things, I think I hit them all, but those are the, I think, the things that we really need right now.
Is it ELL?
Thanks. ELL, you know, that's a good question. I think we need an, I believe it's a full-time ELL coordinator, but I think one of the things that we have considered in the past, Mrs. Teal, is partnering with another district. We, in fact, we've had conversations with another district in the past, and we were hopeful that we would be able to partner with that district, and they would be able to meet the regulation. And I think RIDE is flexible in those situations, so we wouldn't need to hire, you know, a $100,000 ELL administrator to provide the required leadership by regulation for our students. We're hoping that we can partner. One of the challenges is, there are a number of people who are ELL certified, and we actually have some in the district, but it requires, that particular position requires also administrative certification. So, you know, the pool, I think, I think that's one of those areas that's going to be, really take off because there's such a need. And it, you know, it isn't only Cumberland that has a growing ELL population, that's happening in a lot of places.
We're now considered a high incident district.
Yes, we are.
Because of the enrollment number?
Yes, we are a high, yes. That's the language in the regulation. We are a high incidence district. That's correct.
And the recommendations that you had brought forth to the task force are kind of the first layer of the onion. It's not a comprehensive expectation, it's really kind of the starting point.
Well, the approach that we decided to take, Madam Chair, was certainly, you know, there were things that we all, as educators and leaders and educational leaders in the district, feel that we really, we have a responsibility to focus our attention on. So like, for example, I think, who would argue that we should not be exposing students more to technology and the jobs that are available right now that aren't, can't be filled in any STEM-related field? So, you know, a computer science pathway is a, is a good example. We have students who are interested in coding. And, see, one of the things that we want to do is get students excited about coding, but we need to expose them, we need to expose them to that in order to get them excited. So I think we're doing a good job of, you know, of raising their awareness around the possibilities career-wise, but I just, I think we, that's just one example, I think, of where we really need to focus our attention. That's just one. Another one is foreign language, you know, and at the elementary grades, like, you know, do we want our students to learn a second language? Or we, do we want them to just, you know, get their two or three years of foreign language so that it meets the college, you know, entrance requirements? I mean, they're two different things. So, and another, another one, forget, I could go on and on, I'm sorry. But another, another area is, you know, preschool opportunities for children. You know, we, you know, we should, the research is crystal clear that students would benefit from attending, you know, pre-kindergarten, preschool, especially kids who live in poverty really benefit from those kinds of opportunities. So these are the kinds of things that we're talking about, and others, as you know.
Thank you. And I think Mrs. Teal can attest, as we've had the Achievement sub-meetings, the discussion is so often around social workers and needs like that, but then you have had the middle schools come and say, we'd really like to be able to prepare kids for that high school French II class, but because we have such limited exposure with those, you know, trimester courses, they're, the courses aren't substantial enough at this point to prepare them for that, that full-year coursework. And I was, on my way over, we were, I was listening to the radio, and it was talking about computer science courses and how difficult it not only is to get students engaged and excited, because it's really this, it's almost like this, it's a subject that is so hard to get your head wrapped around, but it's very hard to find qualified people to instruct the class. So there was something called BJC, and I'm going to look it up when I, when I get home, Mr. Mitchell, because I wrote it down in the car while I was driving. And it's someone who is trying to help expand the exposure of computer science classes to, to both students and staff. So it's sort of like a Khan Academy approach to it, and we'll, we'll have to take a quick little look at that, because I think it'll be kind of slick. And then lastly, I'll just add that I had an opportunity to sit with the Commissioner of Education today with the school board chairs from around the state, and he discussed for his empowering package. And the first item in the package was extreme regulatory flexibility around, and he gave some examples around like teacher certification, certification flexibility. So if you're really adept and knowledgeable in one content area, you may be able to have the opportunity, even if your certification doesn't sit in that area, to be able to, to be able to teach in that. Those were just examples, but he clearly has a lot of thoughts and ideas in his head. Principal autonomy, giving school autonomy to, at the school, school level. It would require a partnership with, with the teachers' unions with regard to a vote of support for that. Additionally, revising contracts. And then the last one is open enrollment. And it really is about serving residents first, where you could be open enrollment for a certain level with certain opportunities for kids to attend. If you had 10 slots open at your elementary level, you could, you could support it at that level. You could say, we don't have any room in the middle school, but we do have room in the high school. So there's a lot of, a lot of different things that schools can explore should you go down this pathway of your empowerment package. They would be looking for districts to partner. And they don't want to mandate it, you have to want to do it. And I think there's a whole host of discussions that would need to occur, but just at a high level, he was very passionate about, you know, addressing, we're really here for students, and that there are a lot of different opportunities that we could help them. He did talk a little bit about how open school choice would help with mobility, particularly in urban districts where 30% of the mobility occurs in three or four communities. So there's, where that student would be able to stay in the school despite the fact that their parents made, made decisions to move elsewhere. So I think we're going to hear a lot more about that. He seemed very enthusiastic and excited about it, and it seemed like there was some trepidation on the part of the school committee level, but I think it's all, it's all new information, and he's going to be sharing more about that with us. And that's it. I don't know if anyone has any questions? All right, moving along. Reports of standing committees. Mr. Demodica, we have payment of bills. We're going to handle it a little differently this evening, I understand.
Yes, Madam Chair, the fiscal subcommittee meeting did not meet tonight due to the two members being out. But I have the payment of bills that normally come in front of the school committee anyways. I have looked at the vouchers, they've been in the folder. I would make a recommendation to the school committee that we approve the payment of bills in the amount of $1,309,628.29. And normally, three members of the finance subcommittee would sign off on this and present it, and I would be the only signature, but the school committee would vote normally to approve the bills. Thank you.
Mr. Demodica moves passage of the payment of bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Duffy and Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is fiscal management subcommittee update. Mr. Demodica.
Madam Chair, we, again, we did not meet tonight, so we'll have a full agenda at our next meeting, but there is some items that I will be bringing forward for discussion with the school committee tonight.
Thank you. And policy and procedures subcommittee update. Mr. Salvatore, you're pinching for Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Fiorello.
Thank you.
Yes, policy did meet this past Tuesday, January 12, at 5:30. We do have three policies on the agenda. One is going to be tabled, but we can, I can quickly review it when we get down to that area.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Mrs. Teal, achievement and communication?
Yes, we met, I can't remember. It's been so long since we've all been together.
Did I give you an update on Ashton in Cumberland Hill? Or did that?
I think we've had that.
I can't remember.
Yeah, we're up to date.
Are you up to date? Then I won't repeat myself. We definitely have themes going through these meetings, psychologists, social workers, students that aren't being exposed to pre-
Psychologists, social workers, students that aren't being exposed to pre-K. It has a definite detriment to their learning and, as they enter kindergarten. No one can say enough about PBIS and the incredible impact it's having on school culture. I think across the elementary schools, we're all seeing an increase in ELL students, especially students from India, which is interesting. So, science remains an issue, they're working on it. Seeing remarkable progress in areas in math, which you would think that would be an area that we're typically struggling, but that seems to be getting, improving and still need work on, on improving in ELI skills. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Teal.
And we do have a meeting, I think it's going to be January 26th, and that would be BF Norton and the Cumberland High School.
Excellent. And Mr. Duffy, I did ask you some budget task force updates. Do you want to, is there anything more you need to add?
Good, thank you.
Good, thanks for the, the update. Okay, next item, comments from the public. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak? Rep. McLaughlin? I'm not sure Mr. Microphone works. It's working now? Okay, if you don't mind.
Hello?
We're good.
First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish you all a Happy New Year. In reference to some upcoming events, you know, as you know, the General Assembly is back in session. Last night in HEW, we actually heard a bill from Representative Sherpa in reference to mayoral academies and so on, so forth. The impact, you know, on public education with public education. We also had a bill from Representative O'Brien in reference to dyslexia. Actually, there's four bills in. It's become very alarming, especially in the elementary schools, you know. And I will get you people copies of it, you know. It has some very, you know, encouraging language and wording, you know, in it along with holding RIDE responsible to actually bring forward more monies in reference to, you know, special needs and the IEP programs that we have. So, it's a very interesting bill if you get a chance by Representative O'Brien and Representative Sherpa in reference to public education. But I will drop in periodically and keep you guys posted, you know, on what's going on. So, I'm just so proud of young Oliver tonight. It just blew my mind. And, you know, I'd like to get, believe it or not, the standards so that I can relay this to, you know, journalists at the State House. Like I referenced a while ago, we have programs available, intern programs, and to get him working with a journalist and I, I think it'll be, you know, enjoyable thing for him. So, with that said, thank you for your time.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate that. You bet.
One other thing. I, I spoke with the principal in reference, Principal Tenerari tonight in reference to, we've had a problem with the jaywalking, you know.
Yes.
Side. I referenced the statue on there, there are hundred dollar fines, okay? But because of you having an overpass up there, a bridge, there's a loophole there. So, I plan to close that loophole, but I would ask the superintendent to consider in his budget, maybe, and you people are crossing guard, you know, you know, for these children. I mean, you saw what happened Monday. We, we had a person killed on Menon Road. We don't need that, you know, so please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, sorry, lost my, public hearing. We have a reading of policies. Mr. Salvatore. So, we have three here. We have an amended policy, I-6, school-sponsored field trips of long duration. We have G-15 gift acceptance and J-23, J-23, policy affecting students who identify as transgender or gender non-conforming.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The, we, we passed the I-6 school-sponsored field trips of long duration and we also passed the gift acceptance. We tabled J-23, the policy affecting students who identify as transgender, non-conforming.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the reading of policies. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak for or against any of these policies? No hearing, none. We will call the public hearing closed at this point. And as J-23 is tabled, I'm sure it will come back before us and we'll have the, the appropriate public hearing for that. Next item, so it's discussion and a vote to approve amended policy I-6 and that was approved in policy. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. And was, was that a, do you recall the vote?
I do, Madam Chair. We met on Tuesday, January 12th. The vote was three to zero for passage.
Okay, and are you moving passage?
Recommendation, yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to move passage of that policy.
Thank you, Mr. Salvatore. And do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? Mr. Duffy?
Just quick, could you just give the Reader's Digest version, the real short, what the small change was in it?
I can. Thank, thank you, Mr. Duffy. We, we kept it at, and Superintendent Mitchell, please feel free to jump in on this. We kept it for domestic trips, one chaperone per ten students, and international, one chaperone per six students. Okay, so there, there still was other concerns as, as regarded to, you know, for an example, if wrestling goes on, on a trip, we're still, Mr. Ferrellio wants to come back and revisit that. He's still getting some information on how to modify that more, but we wanted to get this in the books. So, at least we got trips coming up. We have a policy for it, so, thank you. Or today, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. They better behave. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries five zero. Next item, discussion and a vote to approve new policy. So, we'll, we'll go to gift acceptance and that was approved?
Yes, Madam Chair. Again, met on Tuesday, that was approved three to zero, recommended passage to the school committee. One of the, this policy was put in place in a way and it starts off to discourage parents and students to give hefty gifts to teachers or anything like that. Because we, we ran into an issue, I believe, last year where several students in a classroom gave a large gift and some other students felt left out and it just wasn't fair. So, that's been capped at twenty-five dollars.
Thank you. Any other questions? And are you moving passage, I assume?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to move passage on this policy.
Mr. Salvatore moves passage. Do I have a second?
This is just the first reading, correct?
Oh, discussion and a vote to approve new policy.
Because it's a new policy, it should be the first reading.
Sorry. So, we, no, no, my, my, thank you for catching that. So, we will remove that, Mr. Salvatore? So, this is the first reading, thank you. So, the vote was on there, I'll scribble that out. Next item, J-23 was tabled, so there will be no action or reading?
And, Madam Chair, let me, real quick on J-23, we had an outstanding turnout. Superintendent Mitchell, Dr. Santa as well, providing input on this policy. We had numerous parents and teachers that, you know, touching their lives, that's affected by it. So, it's, it's a working document, still has a lot to be done, but it is ongoing. I encourage anybody who wants to be involved to show up at the policy meeting when this is on the agenda to provide some input, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion and a vote to approve overnight student field trip, CHS Italy, June 2017. Oh, wow, that sounds awesome. Is anyone here, Mr. Mitchell, this evening representing that?
I think Michelle McIntosh is here to ask for your consideration.
Seven chaperones for you right here. I bet you did.
More chaperones than students.
Does anyone have any questions with regard to it? Mr. Duffy?
So, is this trip replacing what is the France trip usually? Is it transitioning from the France trip to the Italy trip? Is that, what, is this in addition to that? Okay, thank you.
And similarly, the students have like a payment plan like with other trips?
Yes, they, students will be able to use a student payment plan, they can pay them $250.
Got it. Anyone else? Got it. Pleasure of the committee on the overnight student field trip to Italy in June of 2017.
Madam Chair, make a motion, we approve the trip.
Motion by Mr. DeMonica, second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries five zero. Ciao. Next item on the agenda is discussion and a vote to approve resolution SCPR-1, 2016-01, installation of energy control systems at BF Norton School and J.J.M. Cumberland Hill Elementary School.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
This was discussed last month at the fiscal finance subcommittee meeting. Our business manager, Mr. Pignano, had the opportunity to have a conversation with ENE Systems of Canton, Mass. Who handle our energy systems for all our schools. We currently have two schools that do not have energy systems and Mr. Pignano was able to negotiate something where they would do the work now, we wouldn't have to pay for it until next year and would be interest-free. And the savings are approximately seventeen thousand dollars per year and when we spend this, if we vote to spend this money. It would allow us to bring, bring the, the final two schools, which are J.J. McLaughlin and BF Norton. So, we'd be able to control the energy from anywhere. Shut fans off, turn the heat on, it's no day. So, we can, you know, bring all our schools up to date. And I think it's a good deal to do where it's going to cost us no money, interest-free. We would have five payments of forty-six thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars, so for a total of two hundred thirty-four dollars and seven hundred, two, two hundred thirty-four thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars, interest-free over five years. It's one heck of a deal considering the classes fought, almost forty-seven thousand and the savings are going to be guaranteed at seventeen thousand. So, I would recommend that the school committee approve it. We did discuss it at the last school committee meeting and Mr. Pignano was able to negotiate a contract with ENE and they are the vendor that we use for all of our other schools. So, everybody, everything would be with one company. So, I would move passage of SCPR-1, 2016-01 in the amount of two hundred thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Mr. DeMonica moves passage of the resolution and I think we stated it's for ENE and the total amount not to exceed and the energy saving. Thanks, Mr. DeMonica. And so, any further discussion on that? Mr. Duffy?
Did this go up for bid?
ENE is our sole source provider for all these other.
For the other, but did it go up for bid for these projects?
No, it didn't. It was an offer through the ENE Systems. We want to keep everything with one vendor so that everything is married together and it was a good deal to go out. Mr. Pignano can talk a little bit about it?
So, just as a follow, I, I understand that we, it's good to keep with one, but then when the initial bids were done, maybe we should have included the potential work going forward for that because maybe people would have bid it differently. I just have a problem with going with somebody without seeking outside bids as well.
Hold on, Alex.
So, we did blow up the gas last year and all the, the transport, yeah. We also did three of the elementary schools that had energy control systems in at the time, but they had been allowed for disrepair somewhere in the nineties. So, basically, the ninety-three thousand dollars is given up there and it's DNE, so they should come in and get those system. They had to try to break through, up and down. But now in the middle of doing ventilation projects, the two middle schools are back in the spring, so that the ENE has to place it up now. Now, we also improved energy control systems that we used to do in Toronto and less than a quarter. The high school is a, is a different, ELL is not here, that's a different system that we're working on. It makes changes to the energy control. That probably will have to be somebody, somebody on the line. This was a situation where we have five students and five of our seven schools would be the DNE. It makes sense to keep that one back. Because elementary don't have that to work, it's not that many people have to maintain maintenance and spend two hundred forty thousand dollars and wait till five years to pay. So, I approached the Indian assets that would do it. They would end up getting, having maintenance on all our systems, which is good to have one vendor doing maintenance, especially if it's a good vendor, they're better, very good vendor. And they also, I asked them, I said, that first year in these new schools, they'll waive, they'll also waive the maintenance too. So, there's not going to be anyone that's going to really be able to compete with that pricing.
Well, I, we don't know that because we're not putting it out to bid.
But we want, we, we want one vendor to be doing it.
I, I, I won't continue the discussion, but I just have a problem with spending two hundred thousand dollars without going out to bid. That's my only issue with this. Thank you.
Any further questions? So, we have a motion, second, yep. Thank you, Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, so that's four to one. Mr. Duffy dissenting? And that, that completes, Mr. Pignano, all of the schools, so they will all have?
High schools, this summer when we finish the ventilation projects at the two middle schools, we'll have a five elementary and two middle schools. We'll all have brand-new energy control systems.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion and a vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2015-16 school year. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, Madam Chair, I believe there is one application and I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Pleasure of the committee on the homeschool instruction requests. Motion by Mrs. Teal? Second by Mr. Duffy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries five zero. Next item, personnel recommendations?
Madam Chair, Mrs. Fogel is chaperoning the Quebec trip. Really excited about that, looking forward to the weather up there. We actually have one resignation and one leave. I'll do the resignation first. leave. I'll do the resignation first.
Yes, thank you.
I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the resignation of Vilma Arajo, custodian nights at Cumberland High School, effective December 21st, 2015.
Pleasure of the committee on the resignation?
Ma'am Chair, make a motion, we approve the resignation.
We have a motion by Mr. DeMonica, and a second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? I'll just say, Vilma was the custodian who was always at the school when we were departing from our school committee meeting, sometimes very late at night, and we will miss her. All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, we have one leave. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the FMLA leave of Sarah Premiano. She is a PEAP, adaptive PE health teacher at community school, with an anticipated leave date of March 13th, 2016, through the remainder of the school year.
Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mrs. Teal, second by Mr. Duffy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I hope Mrs. Fogel has a great time. She's going to be wet and chilly. Next item on the agenda is, oh, I do have to say my, my one little parent story of that. So I brought my son's suitcase to school, and it was about this big. And some of the other students, and I won't name any girl's names, their suitcases were about that big and about that wide, and Mr. Chandler and I had a grade chuckle this morning. I wouldn't do that. Next item is school committee comments, school liaison reports.
Ma'am Chair, I did speak with Dr. Masterson last night at the PTO meeting, and he did assure me that all the chaperones that were going up to Canada today knew the new rules. So I think they'll be in good hands and maybe keep Mrs. Fogel in line.
I hope so, I hope so. Thank you. Anyone else? And we do not have executive session this evening, so, and Mr. Fiorella's here, so I'm not sure how we're going to adjourn. So, thank you, Mr. Duffy. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Teal. All those in favor? Those opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:43. Thank you, everyone.